The following is a production of Cary TV. The town of Cary is government access channel. Call to order, the May 21st meeting of the Cary Town Council. I thank you for joining us this evening from your home. As we continue to follow the governor's state of order, we are streaming tonight's meeting virtually. The majority of council is present here in the chambers tonight as we have adjusted our seating arrangement to maintain social distancing. Even though we're not wearing them now, we all have mask and sanitizer at our seats to meet the requirement of a remote meetings law. And one council member is participating remotely this week. Mayor Pro Tem Don France is participating remotely. So I thank you for joining us. And at this time, I would ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation.
God, visible, with liberty and.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. I'll remind everyone that since this is a virtual meeting, all our motions have to be a roll call vote. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Starting with Mayor Pro Tem France, your vote to adopt the agenda. Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
And I approve as well, so the motion is unanimous. We have no recognitions, reports, and presentations, which takes us to public speaks out. There, the instructions for submitting comments for public speaks out were attached to the posted agenda, and participants had the opportunity to send comments through email, 311 online portal, and regular mail. All comments received before noon today were emailed to council members. An printed copy was given to council at tonight's meeting. We also provided the opportunity to request calling in to speak at tonight's meeting. At this time, I'll open up public speaks out and call on staff to summarize any comments we've received.
Yes, so the comments that we received are the same speakers that we have on the phone tonight, so they will be given their comments.
Okay.
With the call in.
Very good. So before we go to our live speakers, want them to please understand that the three speakers that we have online, we have three minutes for speaking, and we would love to hear your comments. And the three-minute time limit, I will enforce, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. And I'll be watching a timer here in the council chambers, and when your time is expired, at that time, I'll interrupt you again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to our speakers. The town clerk will announce the speaker, and I'll ask that when you come on, that you again will announce yourself, so we make sure we have the right person online, and then you can begin to speak. So at this time, I'll recognize the town clerk.
Yes, our first speaker is Spooner. Please confirm that you are the correct speaker by providing your name and address.
Could you repeat that? It might have been myself, but I could not hear.
If you could give your name and address to confirm the correct speaker.
I'm Dr. Jean Spooner. Is that who you called?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I did not hear you. Locked out. Dr. Jean Spooner, Chair of the Umpstead Coalition, 2401 Trinity Farms Road, Raleigh. Due to significant public interest, NC DEQ Mining will hold a public hearing for proposed new 400-foot-deep pit mine on Old Reedy Creek Road corridor on the Oddfellows track. The town can and should submit comments. This quarry, this new quarry pit, would severely impact the town of Cary citizens who use the Old Reedy Creek Road recreational corridor and William B. Umpstead State Park. Conflicts with logging trucks and equipment trucks along Old Reedy Creek Road Greenway would be extensive. Long term, we'll have, we'll continue to have dust, noise, truck conflicts in this corridor. The proposed pit may also severely impact your North Cary water reclamation plant and its discharge permit to Crabtree Creek. The public is opposed. The town of Cary should tell DEQ that the town is with your citizens to protect your environment and recreational corridors and our Umpstead State Park and deny the quarry permit. The town of Cary and the North Carolina State Parks requested, and DEQ correctly denied the existing permit on the other side of Crabtree Creek in 1980. And with that, they were supposed to have, but the mining commission overturned, they were supposed to have a 50-year sunset clause, but that was unfortunately recently tried to be reneged by the town of Cary. But we would like, we were promised an end to the conflict with the noise and the dust and the trucks. We hope that Cary will join us in opposing this. This new pit on the other side of Crabtree Creek, two 400-foot pits, would leave a very small insignificant buffers, potentially disastrous to Crabtree Creek. Please have the town of Cary prepare and submit comments, NC DEQ, on this proposed private rock mine on public property that if would approve, would destroy our public property. Thank you for your consideration of submitting comments to NC DEQ on behalf of the town of Cary.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Wong. Please confirm that you are the correct speaker by providing your name and address.
Hi, thank you. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yes, my name is Hua Wong, 7401 Ebenezer Church Road, Raleigh, 27612. Thank you, council, for this opportunity. As the concerned citizens for the environment, I would also like to ask the council to request the DEQ for denial of Wakeston's mining permit. Wakeston submitted the mining permit application in the middle of a pandemic when the public was preoccupied with concern for shelter, food, jobs, and healthcare. But in just two weeks, I observed massive participation from the public with over 450 messages sent from Sierra Club's ad campaign that are statewide, and over 700 messages from Umpstead Coalition's letter campaign. Your citizens put a lot of time and thought into their own unique comments, so it would be most appreciated if you can take the time to read them, just on the side. A number of elected officials, most notable being Senator Wiley Nickel, have already reached out to DEQ. The North Carolina Sierra Club, to my knowledge, has also sent two letters to DEQ detailing environmental damages as reasons why the mining permit should be denied. There is a historical aspect that I recently came across that might be of interest to you and to those who are listening that have more expertise in racial justice issues, and I encourage further investigation if possible. The Umpstead State Park entrance, that is and will continue to be negatively impacted, is the historic African-American section of the park. After 1965, this park entrance was slated to be closed near Harrison Avenue, and the consideration to close that entrance was still included in the state park's master plan well into 1980s. This coincides with Wakeston's proposal for their first quarry that is now operating next to Harrison Avenue. What's the historical impact playing a role as to why a new quarry is not even considered in the first place? Let's not continue this tragedy. While the DEQ has a final say on the matter, anyone can use the public comments to inform the DEQ of the environmental detriment that the quarry would have on Umpstead State Park, and that includes elected official official choose. That's right, during this critical period, I respectfully urge the council of Cary to join the public and other elected officials and write to the DEQ about the environmental impact the quarry would have on the state park and call for denial of mining permit. If there are questions or feel further information is needed, please reach out to any of the following organizations for clarification or assistance, the North Carolina Sierra Club, Umpstead Coalition, TWOC, Bike and Walk NC, NC State Park. Your continued concern for environmental issues sincerely appreciated and needed in order to ensure Cary's and Wake County's environmental health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker and last speaker is Lou. Please confirm that you are the correct speaker by providing your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. My name is Natalie Lou, and I live at 7909 Ebenezer Church Road, but I grew up in Cary. My parents still live in Cary. While Cary is not a direct owner of the Raleigh Durham Airport, the airport is owned in part by Wake County. Since Cary is in Wake County, the city and its residents are owners of the airport. As such, I'm asking you to speak up regarding an important issue. Members of this council are well-versed in business practices. Please consider the difference between managing and owning a business. An internet search will produce a plethora of information. I only have a short time, so let's look at this in a practical way. I own some rental properties. I hire a property management company to oversee them. They manage the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month issues. I don't communicate with them unless there's a significant issue. If a toilet is running or a sink is clogged, they are responsible for getting it fixed, and they can do so without contacting me. But if the water heater breaks or the HVAC totally quits, they call me to discuss what to do. As the owner, I'm responsible for the big decisions. The Raleigh Durham Airport is owned by four public entities. The Raleigh Durham Airport Authority Board has been tasked with managing our public asset. They don't have to contact the owners for the little things, but like any management company in any business, they should be contacting owners for the big things. A quarry, and a quarry on public land adjacent to a highly-used state park, a highly-used greenway, and a private home is a really big thing. The parcel in question is Oddfellows. The deed clearly indicates ownership as the four public entities and not the RDUAA. There are some interesting items from Wakeston's proposal. Wakeston owns 5,500 acres outright, five quarries on 3,600 acres, and 1,900 acres of timberland and commercial property. They don't need to lease land. Wakeston says the 105-acre parcel is very remote from operating airport. They failed to mention that it's adjacent to two highly-used legal public areas, a state park and a greenway. Wakeston says the land has difficult terrain. Given the location next to Umpstead State Park, this difficult terrain is a huge asset that greatly adds to the value of the land. Wakeston says there's a lack of utilities. They failed to mention there are two private homes with electricity, well, and septic, and there used to be more. Wakeston says there is poor access now and in the future. Then why is there a public parking lot just a few hundred yards away that Cary paid for? Why is the area jam-packed throughout the year and frequented by Boy Scouts, hikers, runners, bikers, fishermen, bird watchers, dog walkers, parents with children, high school and college biking, running and biking teams? Wakeston's appraisal company valued the land at 2.1 million; the conservation fund offered 6.46 million, three times more. While Wakeston and RDUAA see it as trash land, the public sees it as a major asset. So much so, so we've bought it for five years. Due to significant public interest, NC DEQ will hold a public hearing. Given the land is adjacent to Cary and Cary is owner of the airport by virtue of being in Wake County, please submit conference requesting to deny the quarry pit on Oddfellows' public land and reinstate the sunset clause on the Triangle Quarry private land and support the state park's acquisition of Oddfellows and 286 East into the state park system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My understanding, there are no more speakers.
That's great.
Since there are no more speakers, we'll close public speaks out, and we'll move to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. This is item four, in case you're following along. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Ratification of adoption of CDBG Consolidated Plan in Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan. Adoption of resolution to set the public hearing for 20A03 Charles Edward Gates and Christine B. Gates trustees annexation. Would council members like any of these pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All right, starting a roll call vote with Mayor Pro Tem France. The motion is to approve. Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion is unanimous. So that takes us to discussion items, and we have no public hearings, so that takes us to the discussion items which are going to be taken together. It's 19A11 Branston LLC annexation and 19REZ19 Feral Property rezoning. Since these items are related, we're going to have Deborah Granon present these items together, and Ms. Granon will also summarize the planning and zoning board's recommendation on behalf of the chair. Council may take action, and this item will require a simple majority vote. Ms. Granon.
Evening, mayor, and good evening, council. It's wonderful to see all of you virtually. Hope everyone is well. This is a request to annex and rezon approximately eight acres located at 1033 Furson Road. The property fronts Furson Road, it's located on the north side of Morrisville Parkway at its intersection with the American Tobacco Trail. The property is home to an early 1900s farmhouse and several outbuildings. Early in the process, the applicant and the property owners let us know that they did not have any plans to preserve or relocate this house, but they were receptive when we requested a site visit. So last June, several Cary staff members visited the property with the applicant and a member of the Feral family and toured the house and the site, and we observed that it had been expanded over the years. There were porches added, the floor plan was reconfigured significantly, and most of the original siding, doors, and windows had all been replaced. So due to the extensive changes and the loss of the original materials, we determined that the buildings were not a preservation priority, but we were able to document the buildings with detailed photographs. The site is located in Wake County, and it's currently zoned Residential 40 Watershed. The applicant is requesting annexation into Cary's corporate limits and is seeking to rezon the property to Residential 20, conditional use, and Watershed Protection Overlay District. As you may recall, under North Carolina general statutes, the site could be developed potentially using a combination of exempt and expedited divisions of land, and if developed in this manner, the developer would be exempted from the development plan review process and not be required to provide features such as perimeter buffers or streetscapes or open space, nor would they be required to make road improvements or to build a streetside trail on Morrisville Parkway. With that in mind, the applicant proposed several zoning conditions to bring the site a little bit closer to what might be provided with the typical development plan. The applicant is proposing to limit the use to six detached residential lots, not allow direct vehicular access to Morrisville Parkway, dedicate right-of-way along Morrisville Parkway, provide a 20-foot-wide greenway easement along Morrisville Parkway, provide a 30-foot-wide streetscape along Morrisville Parkway, provide a 50-foot-wide buffer along the American Tobacco Trail with a Type A planting standard along the northern portion of the site and a Type B standard along the southern portion of the site, and they're offering to pave all of Furson Road and provide curb and gutter along the western side of the property in front of the proposed development. Buffer, streetscapes, and greenway easements shall all be located within HOA-maintained common open space. At their January meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended consistency with the Imagine Cary Community Plan by a vote of seven to two. Since then, the applicant has offered a written zoning condition to increase the ATT buffer to a Type A standard along the northern portion of the site. And Board Chair Ryan Eads provided the following summary of the board's discussion. Overall, the board felt this request conformed well to the comprehensive plan. The only major issue identified during our discussions was around the proposed buffer separating the subject property from the American Tobacco Trail. Two of the members felt that the buffer proposed, which was a Type B, was inadequate and that a buffer Type A was needed, given the significance the comprehensive plan places on the American Tobacco Trail and the desire for a denser planting standard. This concludes Mr. Eads' comments. The applicant is viewing the meeting tonight and would like to share the following comments with you. This resounding request sets this property up for a continuation of the adjacent Montvale Copper Leaf Glen projects. Lots will be approximately one-half acre or greater in size. The American Tobacco Trail will be protected with a 50-foot buffer. Future development will pave Furson Road and provide curb and gutter on the project side. Right-of-way has been offered adjacent to Morrisville Parkway. Buffers and greenway easements are also provided. We've worked diligently with staff over the last several months on the wording of proposed conditions, and we respectfully request your favorable consideration of this rezoning. And that concludes the applicant's comments. In our analysis, staff finds that the proposed rezoning most directly addresses policies in the live, shape, and engage chapters of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, as well as meeting several policy intentions of the Green Level Special Planning Area. The property is in an area designated as Neighborhoods West of Flat Branch in the Green Level Special Planning Area. The proposed density, use, and the 20,000-square-foot minimal lot size are all consistent with this designation, and the site also provides transitions between similar residential developments to the east and the lower-density residential developments to the west. The shape chapter stresses the importance of maintaining Cary's attractive appearance, and the Green Level Special Planning Area specifically notes the importance of shielding new development from thoroughfares and from the American Tobacco Trail. The applicant addresses these policies by providing a 50-foot-wide buffer along the trail with a Type A planting standard along the northern portion of the site where there's some gaps in the existing vegetation and a Type B standard elsewhere. And this slide shows the location of the American Tobacco Trail buffer and identifies the planting standards. The applicant partially addresses policies in the engage chapter related to the provision and maintenance of Cary's greenways by offering a greenway easement along the property frontage. I'd like to point out, though, that if the site is developed under the allowed exemptions, the developer would not be required to construct the trail. Also, a land dedication or recreation fees in lieu of a land dedication would not be required. After weighing all the elements of the case, staff finds that, on balance, the request is consistent with the Imagine Cary Community Plan. Specifically, the policies in the live and shape chapters are addressed, as well as the Green Level Special Planning Area. In general, the use, the density, and the lot size are all appropriate. Therefore, staff recommends approval. And as a reminder, the property is outside Cary's corporate limits and ETJ, so the applicant has requested annexation, and annexation action is required prior to your taking action on the rezoning. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. And to follow up on your last statement there, so if council members are inclined to not support this proposal, you probably want to express that as we discuss this so that when we get to the annexation vote, if there's not enough support, then the applicant probably does not want it annexed. Having said that, I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments, starting with Mayor Pro Tem France.
I have none at this time.
Okay. Other council members, questions or comments?
I'd like to understand the, I guess, the average of the types of buffers that we have of Cary, of the Cary side of the American Tobacco Trail. They've only, the applicant has suggested they do only part of it as a Type A buffer, and the other part of it and the other part of it is Type B. What does the rest of that look like? My experience is that it's Type A, but Ms. Granon, you or the applicant, can you provide that input?
Sure. There are some portions of the American Tobacco Trail that are existing today that are a Type B standard, and they're vegetated, where development has not occurred. And that's what's happened on the southern, two-thirds of the site. There's mature trees. There's already some dense vegetation. They have asked for the Type B buffer to be the standard so that they don't have to go in and supplement any planting material in that area because one of the things that happens is it doesn't thrive when you've already got a lot of mature trees. But then on the northern portion of the site, there's some noticeable gaps in the vegetation. And so that's why the Planning and Zoning Board and staff felt that they needed to enhance that buffer and actually go in and have to beef it up to meet that Type A standard.
Okay, so in general, would you say that where there is residential along the American Tobacco Trail, is it a Type A or Type B or some mixture?
It's truly a mixture. And what happens is when there's new development in Cary, that's when applicants are required to provide a 50-foot buffer from the trail. And with the development plan, they're required to install it at a Type A standard.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes.
So Ms. Granon, in the staff report, it suggested there'd be roughly half-acre lots, but I didn't see a condition that stated that. The, in the condition you use R20, is that 20,000 square feet gross over the entire? Like, if they put land into buffer, so that means that their lots can actually go smaller than a half acre?
That is an excellent question. And no, the actual lot size must be 20,000 square feet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions?
As for the existing house, I appreciate the attention that the staff and the applicant and the owner of the property has paid to it. And it has been extensively renovated, especially the siding and the windows. Windows are a big thing with old houses, and they're all new. So I concur with the staff's comments and recommendation. But I do encourage the applicant to do whatever they can to, if there are any existing architectural features inside the house that still are existing from when the house was built, to see if they can salvage them somehow before raising the entire building. Perhaps they could be repurposed elsewhere.
Very good. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny.
And there's a motion at your seat with the word.
May I?
And we're doing annexations.
Annexation first.
Yep.
I move that we approve annexation 19A11 Branston LLC. And the statement of consistency as attached to this motion.
Mrs. Robinson, we should wait. We should annex.
Oh, do we have? Oh.
And then as a second motion.
Do we annexation second?
No, do the annexation first and then move to the zoning and state.
Make the motion for the annexation alone. That's it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All right, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem France.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurha.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, which is unanimous for the annexation. Ms. Robinson?
Okay, so may I do the statement of consistency now?